Okay, the time is now one o'clock. I'll call our meeting order and we'll start today with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, first item on the agenda today, we have Josh Smith, our veteran service officer.
Good afternoon. So just a little updates. So far this year, we've been creeping up on the 250 veterans that have come in and talked and all that type of stuff. We're about 241 right now. Still well over half are being walking. So that's good. Heard a lot of different comments from people, hey, you know, if you're a veteran, if you want to see him and all that type of stuff. Definitely getting out there, walk through or round the lap. Still plugging away with that, getting some veterans from outside the county who are coming in, so that's a plus. Some of the events that I've gone to within the last month, really, we had the fourth quarter discovery class at Indian Springs, the final one. Throughout the entire year of doing that each quarter, it's worked out really well. They've enjoyed it. Won't be to come back next year and do it again, so that'll be great. Also, we had the Memorial Day presentation of poppies at the Indian Springs. Every year, the sixth graders get together, they make poppies, and they send them to the Fort Wayne VA Medical Center to be handed out. So myself and a representative from the VA Health Clinic, both were down there to accept the poppies and just kind of give a little word, you know, the meaning of Memorial Day type thing, and they seemed very receptive to all that, all the sixth graders and all that. Some future things we got coming up. I put in to try to get into, start setting up a booth at First Fridays, to just have some literature out there for that type of stuff and business cards, different things like that, so we'll see what that pans out for. We also got our annual conference coming up at the end of the month, June 23rd and 24th. So look forward to that, seeing what new information comes from there. I'll learn that. Military appreciation soccer game for boys is still scheduled for the September 2nd. Still working on all that type of stuff, so I'll learn that. Just plug in a room.
Great.
Awesome.
Any questions or anything?
The First Friday idea is a great idea.
Yeah, thanks. I think that'll be good.
And I will note that June is post-traumatic stress disorder awareness month, and, you know, a lot of veterans have issues with PTSD, and one great place to start for help and treatment for that is the local BSO.
If you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda today is the Whitley County Solid Waste Management District Joint Board Report. Hi, Don.
Good afternoon. How are you? Have you been given the memo of what I'm going to hear?
I don't think so.
Okay. I can leave a copy with Kami or something.
Sure.
I am president of the Whitley County Solid Waste Joint Board. Normally, your president is someone you look up to, but in my case, I wasn't at the first meeting, so automatically. So the joint board was formed because when you have an interlocal agreement, you have to have a buffer in there, someone that looks out for both parties, for the county, for solid waste. So I don't anticipate us really having to do that, but that's the idea of the joint, of the joint board. So by law, before July 1st of every year, we have to report to you, and we have to report to the solid waste board. We'll be here next Monday. You'll get to hear this again with what we've come up with for the annual report. So at this time, the joint board recommends that no changes in the collection process are programmed. Secondly, the success rate for the collection of the recycling fees for the calendar year of 2024 was 96 percent. That's very good. But there, as Kay kind of reported us, most of the uncollectible fees will probably be collected at tax sales or certified, or when the private sales are done. I need to report there are currently no lawsuits pending against the district, and neither, excuse me, neither the district nor the commissioners have requested any additional information from the joint board regarding other matters. We have monitored the compliance, and we have no recommendations for either the district or the commissioners with respect to thereto. And lastly, the joint board has been informed by the county treasurer's office that the collection charges provided by the agreement may not be sufficient to cover the expected collection expenses that will be incurred by the county in the following budget year. The joint board recommends that the commissioners and the district review those expenses and determine whether or not the collection charges currently should be adjusted in the 2026 budget. That's all we can do, is to say, you know, you might want to look into that. I know the one feeling I got out of all this was, the county feels like, the county gets a portion of the collection for Kay and her office and Tiffany and all them to do their jobs. And there's some thought that that should be increased, and then there's other thought that there's other counties in the state that don't even charge that collection fee. That's not for us to decide, it's just for us to say that's part of our report. So at that point, that's all I really have. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for Don? Hey, we really appreciate you serving on that board. It can be a thankless job. No.
No, I appreciate doing it, and I'm honestly not sure, we're not to take sides, but we are to be a buffer or some resource for the county and for the district waste.
Yep. Well, thanks for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the probation transition with the facilities that we own, the Purdue Extension Building. We've had a lot of conversation about this, and we worked with council, we had a special meeting, and we talked about facilities owned versus rent or purchase of a facility, and as we've dug in, we found that there's no simple solution. There's not a perfect solution, there's not a perfect answer for any of this. But I thought it was appropriate for this to be an agenda item and to discuss very publicly what our plans are for both probation and then ultimately what that means for Purdue Extension. So I'll open it up for conversation. I know that we don't agree here fully, so I just think it's appropriate that we have a very public conversation about what it is that we're looking to do.
So I will say that, like you, I agree with you, that is, this is a difficult topic. If there's not a perfect solution, if there was, it would have been handled years ago. And so, you know, you look at the two buildings in question, the branch court where Extension's currently located, the physical layout of that building, although it has been modified, the county invested money to modify it so that it would fit Extension five years ago or whenever, well, when they were moved in there. The layout of the building might be an adequate need for probation facility-wise, but the location of it is not great. But we've got to, we need to be moving, doing something, I think. I've spent a lot of time talking to property owners. You guys have been good enough to tour a couple of properties with us that were available for either rent or purchase. I talked to Rusty Parish again this morning. My personal belief is that the best fit would be, and I think I'm in the minority here, but this is what I think, building out on Opportunity Drive, I think it is, close to the location of the new jail, where the Farm Bureau has been located for maybe 20 years now, would be an excellent fit in the short term, and when I say short term, I mean three years. I think that it's move-in ready. We're looking at significant cost, and Maintenance Director Mark Service here, he can maybe speak to that, to modify the basement area that it's proposed to move Extension to. And anybody that's done any kind of a big project, when you start tearing out walls or carpet, ceilings, there's tons of hidden costs that pop up, and yeah, it's expensive to rent space, but that building is move-in ready, it's furnished, they're going to provide lawn care, snow removal, basic building maintenance, which takes that off of our staff. I think that's the best solution in the short term, as we look three years down the road. Extension has expressed a lot of confidence that they're going to have a building dedicated for their use at the fairgrounds, but how do we get to there from here? And we've got to do something in the meantime, and that's what I think the best solution would be.
And what was the monthly cost for rent at the Farm Bureau building?
Approximately $86,000 a year, about $7,200 a month, and costs of everything we all know have gone up tremendously. You look to rent a one-bedroom apartment, you're probably going to spend 1,200 bucks a month.
And would the landlord cover the expense for utilities?
No, utilities were not included in that, but you pay utilities, yeah. I mean, even if you own a building, you're going to pay utilities, but that's part of ownership or part of occupancy, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have our joint meeting, and there's been a lot of internal discussion. Obviously, Senate Bill 1 passed. We don't know what's going to happen with the county's financial income, and obviously with the current administration. I know, I've also heard from probation that some of their grants that cover some of their positions will be cut. Obviously, probation has to be funded. We did have our joint meeting with council. They obviously are the, they hold the purse. We do not make financial decisions. We can ask, but we don't have final say. They had no appetite to rent or purchase. They wanted us to use our current facilities, and again, it's not a perfect solution for anyone, but I just don't believe that we have the funds to purchase another building or spend around, probably with utilities, $100,000 a year to rent. So.
We heard from Mark even as recent as today with some numbers for the modification. Of course, they're tentative, they're early, it's not, I wouldn't say it's an actual estimate. Is that fair to say, Mark? We're not saying these are concrete numbers, but we feel that a lot of this work could be done for a one-time expense of around $75,000. I don't know, Mark, if that's, if you want to share with, you know, the general public what it is that we intend to spend that money on to make those modifications.
Yeah, we're at about $50,000, but I don't have numbers for the ranking that's going to be required for the extension material. I'm waiting on that number. It's going to be a couple of weeks before I get that.
Okay. We added that 25 as kind of a buffer because we know that the phone systems, we'll have to move a server and change the phone systems, and probably going to be some additional costs in excess of that 50,000 that you were estimating. And also, we know that recently you went for a request for additional overtime hours, and we've just about exhausted those overtime hours, and it would be great to keep a lot of that work in-house if your guys are willing to work a few extra hours a day and get it done, and so we'd be supportive of going with the request for additional overtime hours as well. But again, we see this as somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000 a one-time expense. We got our utility bill from the city, which, I'll remind you, we agreed to share in that cost for utilities at the old jail, which is only fair because we're the ones occupying the space, but this month it came in over $7,000. So, you know, we're incurring these new expenses for utilities every month, and it just, I had said from the very beginning, it didn't make sense for us to occupy that building and keep the lights on for one or two departments. We need to just get moved out. So the solution, I think, that we have in front of us is to maximize the utilization of the space that we currently own, and that, to me, means moving Purdue Extension to the government center and moving probation to the current Extension Building. So again, I think it's appropriate, you know, we've been very, you know, open with meetings, and I think it's appropriate that we have a motion to proceed with this so that we can go to council tomorrow and ask for an allocation to get the work started.
Sound move.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, and that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the JABs contract. I saw even as early as this morning that they replied with corrections. They've accepted the corrections that we presented, so that may not be the most current. There's, I think there's a more current in our email that I can print after the meeting, but all it is, is accepting your corrections. So that's ready to be approved. I'm sure that you've had a chance to review. Any questions about the JABs a bit? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Sound move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the MicroPulse Road Improvements Agreement. Are you?
Yeah, so we had, the MicroPulse wanted to do some improvements out there on the road, so this is just kind of protecting the county from that work they want to do. The, we had, they originally said they were going to do it last year, and then said, no, we're not going to have it done until this year, 2025. We had agreed to that. I think an old, the original version of the agreement got signed with the December termination date, so this is just the same agreement, but extends it out into July this year, because the other one's already void because of the timeline is up.
True.
So it's the exact same agreement, it's just a different date.
Any questions about the agreement? Do I have a motion to approve?
Sound move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and opposed, the same, that motion carries. Next up is Paula Warden from Community Corrections.
I'm here to request approval to establish two ordinances, one for a restricted and the other for unrestricted fund to receive donations for our program. That would be either from service organizations or individuals. This would just allow me to manage that better and have a better ability to generate reports from you or anyone who asks. Did you give those?
I did. I wasn't sure what I was supposed to do with them, because they said draft across the top.
Yeah, it was something new, so I wanted you to take a look at, see if any concerns before, obviously, I would ask them to make any official.
Yes, so if you're okay with the concept of it, maybe we can have it ready for next meeting, yeah.
Do you have any concerns about that or questions?
No. I think it's a great idea, yeah.
I just think we're going to probably be leaning on people more than we ever have just because of the changes in the grants, so this will just help me make it a lot better.
Right.
So we'll have the forms for next meeting?
Yep. What's the, so there's restricted and unrestricted?
Yes, and we don't know, I didn't know, I don't really know a lot about it, other than if someone would specifically say, I want this money used for veterans' treatment court, then we put it in the restricted fund. If they just say, use it for community corrections programming, I'd put it in the unrestricted. Is that your thinking?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the stakeholder account's going.
Okay, I think we can do one ordinance and create both funds within one ordinance, but I can work with you on that.
Okay.
Perfect. We'll see you next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Next up is Scott Wagner with the Health Department. He's shaking his head no.
Yeah, I talked to Scott. This is on me. We will have that ordinance ready for the next meeting. We'll get it finalized this week, and we'll have it.
Okay, great. So we'll move on then to Nathan Bilger from Planning and Building for the plat request.
Good afternoon. I have one plat for your consideration today for Forest South, which is located on 700 East, just north of 800 South, I believe, 900 South, excuse me. What they're doing is they're splitting off a lot in order to construct a new outbuilding on that lot for financing reasons, but there are a couple other things that come into play as well. What you're accepting would be a small amount of right-of-way there along 700 East, and then the easements that are shown on the plat. Comes to you with approval, primary approval from the plan commission. There were some changes that needed to be made in the text which have been made. Any questions?
No questions.
I'll move to approve the request for Forest South plat as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, the same, and that passes.
I'll leave this over here for you to sign afterwards, then.
Drug Free Indiana, or, did I say that right? Drug Free Indiana, right?
Yeah.
And obviously, you're not Hunter LaRue.
I'm not.
So.
Hunter wasn't available, but Jen Christie is also here to represent Drug Free Indiana as well as me. I had sent the DFI recommendations for the next funding cycle. I've had an opportunity to look those over. So basically, the Drug Free Indiana money is there, is collected mostly by probation and community corrections in the clerk's office. It's the $200 fee that's assessed to offenders who are committing drug and alcohol offenses. We meet once a month, we talk about updates, and then we have a committee that looks over the grants. And so those grants are in three different categories. You have the prevention, the education, the treatment. And so those grants were looked over by the committee, made recommendations to Drug Free Indiana last month, which we accepted. Then we had to wait for our plan to be approved by the state, which it was, so this is our last step before we can ask Tiffany to release those funds to go into those different categories and fund those different requests.
Any questions about the request for funding?
I'll move to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, the same, that motion carries. Thank you. Brad Allen, county engineer.
Good afternoon. So previously, I was up here for the bridge inspection contract between us and the consultant that's going to be on at USI. This time, it's the contract between us and Endot for the grant. That contract should have come to you on Dr. Simon.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure it was all good.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we're all good. It was previously approved, and so I think we're good on that. Excuse me.
Thanks, Brad.
Ryan Gutz, Highway Department.
Good afternoon. The Crowe Stadium Grant contract was revised. I sent it off this morning to Fenn and Brown, and it's not been returned yet, so.
Okay.
We'll postpone that until next meeting.
Okay.
The right-of-way permit request from NIPSCO, did you get that in the first year?
Yep.
I don't see any issues with that. They are possibly going to cut it in the green, it looks like, and just want to make sure we have a list of discovery, get that approved by the legislature.
Have you had a chance to review the right-of-way permit?
I would move to approve this presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, the same, that passes unanimously. So do you have a copy that you want signed, or are we just signing this copy? And will that go to you first for a copy, or does that just go right back to Ryan?
It doesn't matter. You can either give it to me or send it to me, either way.
We'll get it. Sure you got it.
Can I just give this to you?
Thank you.
Yep.
As far as the ordinance, strictly grants, that is something I think Brad Allen, the county engineer, might be able to speak to. the County Engineer, might be able to speak to better than someone that's been handling the, the grant.
So I think some of the things need to be clarified with this ordinance. Originally, I had reached out to them about the Indiana ordinance for the engineering portion of the striking grant. Getting confused because there is no grant for the engineering portion of the striking grant. It's all a hundred percent fund. So there's no ordinance needed now. But there will be an ordinance needed when we go to construction, um, next year. It looks like. So I don't know if this is establishing the construction grant ordinance ahead of time. If so, then that works for me. If not, if it's for the engineering, then we get my opinion.
Have you seen this?
Yeah, I don't recall if it was for engineering or striking. I thought it was just for the striking.
That's why I'm a striking.
Yeah, I did too.
So for the actual construction.
Yeah.
We don't have a, any sort of contract in not or anything for that yet. So we don't have a federal contract number or anything.
So we should probably wait until we have that. But I looked at this, this was fine. This was for the striking, but we can wait until you actually have the contract then.
Okay.
And that will come after the engineering part is the letting and the contractor comes up board, it'll make.
Okay. So we'll hold off on the ordinance till we have the contract. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Um, the next item on the agenda is the facilities request. And this request comes from Sabina Bepfetti of the Wilt County Pride Group. This is for their Prism Fest. And they anticipate approximately seven hundred participants. The date requested is the twentieth of September. And the times requested are from one to ten. We've all had a chance to review. And so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sorry, I'm just reading the attachment from Ed.
Yep.
Okay, second. I think I did everything I'm supposed to do.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion here? And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same. And that passes unanimously. While we're on the topic of facility requests, we have, if you want to.
Sure. And so in April of, um, April of this year, we had a request come for First Fridays, and we discussed amending the policy for the ninety-day, not approving things that are more than ninety days out. And you guys determined that because of the logistics of having a multi-tiered event, that it made sense that for those limited circumstances, you would approve more than ninety days in advance. So you voted on that in the April meeting. This is just codifying what you'd already agreed to. And it also adds in, the other thing we discussed in that meeting was certain departments sign off on any, any use of the space that makes sense. I, it's listed in there, I don't remember off the top of my head, but.
Yep, yep. I mean, it's, it's security, it's maintenance, it's emergency management agency, it's health department when there's food, and it's clerk's office in an election year.
So I would just need, you just need to approve that new amended policy.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the amendments.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that carries unanimously. And then in addition, do you want to talk about the meeting minutes?
Yeah, so we had all that discussion in the April meeting. And it just, the, the discussion about amending the policy wasn't covered in the minutes. So I just amended the minutes. So we would need a vote to accept the amended minutes for April seventh, I believe it was.
And, and what this does, it just better defines, I mean, it was a conversation in a public meeting. You can watch the video, but just wasn't clearly defined in the meeting minutes. So I would entertain a motion to accept the amended version of the April seventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same. And that passes unanimously. And then, uh, next item on the agenda is payroll and accounts payable claim approval.
So on a Friday and through all that, except for there was one, I think, that Commissioner Basinger finished here a little bit ago. Everything looked to be in order, so I will move to approve payroll.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same. And that carries unanimously. Accounts payable.
Similar, similarly, everything looked to be in order with accounts payable claims, so I'll move to approve those.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same. And that carries unanimously. And the last item on the agenda is our meeting minute approval for May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes, everything is accurate to the best of my recollection. So I'll move to approve the minutes from the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five commissioner meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that motion carries unanimously. Uh, at this time, I'll open up for public comment. If anyone has anything they'd like to come forward and address, this will be your time. Anyone for public comment? Good to see you too.
Yeah, two o'clock.
Okay, here and none. Andy, is there anything you'd like to add?
I don't have any, no, I'm good.
Tiffany, anything you'd like to add?
Um, did you guys see that email about the Baker Tilly? Doing the disservice reporting for the M I.
Yep, and we had agreed to do this, and I had forgotten.
That's okay.
So this is for ARPA funds, right?
Correct. Uh, no.
No.
No, this is for the new jail.
New jail, the bond.
To do the bond reporting, yes.
So Baker Tilly does our bond reporting. And so this is an agreement with them to continue.
As well as verify that they use correct ones.
Okay.
I would move to approve the Baker Tilly contract.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll open it up for a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same. And that carries.
And while you're saying that, I thought I'd let you know that Kay and I got approval from the state today. We submitted on Friday for settlement. I think it's our fastest approval we've had, so.
Okay.
Settlement's approved, and we can now distribute to taxing units.
And the audit is nearing completion, right?
Yes, they just sent out an email about the exit interview for that.
Okay.
Hopefully coming to an end here soon.
Rob, anything to add?
I'll just say what we saw was a demonstration of the democratic process. That's, that's one of the great things about being Americans. We don't necessarily agree on everything, but we can talk it out. We can find a solution. And I came out on the short end of, of this instance. But I still enjoy working with both of you. And I know that we're going to work together to continue to, uh, execute the county's business to the best of our ability.
Thank you. Anything from the Yoots' side?
Actually, a couple of things. One, if you applied for a grant to get fiber to your home for the Indiana Connectivity Program, and you got the, the paper in the mail telling you to sign this to get the fiber to your home, which is better internet, and you've not sent it in, send it in, or you will not get that service. It's part of the, the grant process that the grant applicant has to send into the state. And if they don't have that signature on there, they cannot, they will not get the funds to build the fiber to your home. So if you or if you know someone who's signed up for that, you can do it online or you can send in the physical copy that they sent to your home. So that's one. And then two, our assistant Kami, her last day is Friday? Is it Friday? And she's just been wonderful. Oftentimes, if you come in and we're not here, you'll see her. Or if you call in, there's a good chance that she's going to be the one that helps you or directs you to wherever you need to go. And it's not easy putting up with the three of us, at least in my opinion. I don't know what you guys thought, but she's been wonderful. So we wish her all the best, and she's going to be moving to another spot in the county. And also, if you know anyone who would like to apply for that position, go to the county's website. I believe everything is on there about the job description and all of that. Apply. So we're looking for a new assistant. That is all. And thank you, Kami. I'm glad that you're not leaving Willie County Government, so.
The only thing that I would add is we've had conversation about a yield sign on three fifty east at five hundred north, where we have a unusual intersection. And we would like to start moving forward with that process, whatever that entails. I don't know if it's going to need a road study or just an ordinance to back the yield sign. Or I don't, I don't know what is going to be needed. But it's the will of the commissioners that we move, that we start to move forward on that process for a yield sign on the approach from the, from the north coming south.
From the, from the west coming east on five hundred north, down, down the hill.
Okay.
And possibly also from the west, from the east coming west as the five hundred north jogs right there at three fifty east. And there's currently traffic can just zip right around that without stopping. And it seems like there have been several close calls. And I think that it would be appropriate to provide some additional signage there to, to just to remind people that they need to slow down and look because that woods kind of makes it very difficult to see through there, especially when there's foliage on the trees like there is now.
Okay, so if you could start that process by discovering what we need to do and work with, you can go direct with Andy on ordinances and if we need to do a road study. I know that Region Three A has, in the past, provided that service for us. And I'm, I'm assuming they, they still do that. But I think they're limited on resources, the number of, uh, road study kits they have and the, and the personnel to complete that. So whatever we need to do.
I'll give them.
We want to get that done. And I have nothing else to add, so at this time, I'll adjourn the meeting.